Rivers County County, I'm Honorable General Grant, of City Qua. Grand Group County, I'm an attorney and counsel senior, honourable representative Konati Kofa. River G County, I'm Honorable Representative Alexander Paul, I'm Honorable Attorney General John Lee Wohl, I'm Justice Sergeant William Senior. Wapu County, I'm in the head norman, in the Littoral College, and I'm a Littoral Father Warrick. Honorable Speaker, honorable members of the House of Representatives, there are forty-two honourable members present. With the deed acting, one honourable member distant, one honourable member present. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. For the two members present, we can't go in the regular business. Reading correction, amendment, and adoption of the agenda.
The sixth day sitting, of the first quarter of the second section, of the Honourable House of Representatives, of the Fifty-Fifth Legislature of the Republic of Liberia. Thursday, January 30, 2025, agenda. One session called the Court of, two prayer, three road walk, full reading correction, or amendment and adoption of the agenda. Third call for petitions, sixth call for standing committees report. Honourable, we have report from the House's Statutory Committee on Rules, Order, and Administration, surrounding the impasse created by the refusal of Honourable Councilor Lieutenant Konati Kofa, representative of District Two, Grand Group County, to backet the offices of the Speaker. Seventh, call for special committee's report. Eighth, call for motion, bills, and resolutions. Honourable, we have communication from Honourable Steve Tua, representing Electra District Number Two, Rivers County, submitting for the amendment by the legislature code of code, the Rivers County Community College. Now, this is on Speaker's desk. Honourable, we have communications from the Superior Senate, one, endorsing passes due number twenty-three in Tarato, and add to ratify the law agreement for a head security program investing in Central Africa using the multi-phase program, programmatic approach, saw between the Republic of Liberia and the International Development Association. Two, seeking the House's concurrence on sentence in Crossville number one in Tarato, and add to amend that detected public authorities law, appearing goals of law revive, to establish the Liberian National Tourism Authority Act, FNTA. B, communication from Honourable Apreyit Flobo, representing Electra District Number Four, Grand Basar County, requesting for the management of city brother Yekoparika and the Ministry of Commerce to appear before Plenary to address production of substantial baby materials and the high prices. C, communication from Honourable Johnson S N Williams Senior, representing Electra District Number Three, River G County, filing a complaint against Honourable Yekewa Fowba, representing Electra District Number Ten, Masurara County. D, communication from Honourable Anthony F Williams, representing Electra District Number Two, Maryland County, craving the honourable members of the House to invite the heads of the Liberian Repudies, Repatriation, and Resetment Commission, Ministry of Justice, Liberian National Police, Liberian Integration Service, Ministry of Internal Affairs, Ministry of Agriculture, and Forests and Development Authority to provide strategies and plans regarding the stopping of influx of illegal immigrants within a region and other parts of the country. E, communication from Honourable NS M Maxier Senior, representing Electra District Number Four, Neymar County, informing the honourable members of the House that he will be traveling to Abuja, Nigeria to attend a five-day realm learning exchange program. F, communication from Honourable Samson Kwenuwuya, representing Electra District Number Two, Sano County, craving the endurance of Plenary to invite the Minister of Public Works to appear before the members of the Honourable House to provide reasons why they are hassling them, the Ministry's intervention, and all action plans for the reconstruction of the totally damaged Sesto River Bridge at RTR Rivers County. G, communication from Honourable Steve Tua, representing Electra District Number Two, Rivers County, asking for a scheme to enable him travel abroad. H, communication from the Ministry of National Defense, submitting the Ministry's annual report for 2024. R, communication from Naba Estop Bundo, where a former representative Samuel G S Bundo informed the honourable members of the House about the passing away of a person who was a member of the Thirty-Second Legislature. Ten, Mercedes, eleven, a judgment. Honourable Speaker, Honourable General Speaker, the Supreme Court, ladies and gentlemen, that is the renewal of the draft agenda for the business, thank you sir.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. With the renewal of the
Honourable Speaker's presence this morning, good evening, and good afternoon, please, on the occasion. My name is Yasasugai, I'm bringing from this live broadcast on the Monroe City Bronx. The Fifty-Fifth Legislature, we zone session, and today is always the they have just bigger, yeah, regular session.
We brought from
that is Nigel, honourable, Karen family, for his avo.
I can see we brought our big and they cannot be, and they're taking so hard. For the motion of eight, two, seven, eight. What is, are you going ready for?
Alright.
I'm ready, we're going to call it on. Honourable General Speaker, to the moment. I would like to call out, oh man, I'll be right back. Oh, you can call it on, oh man, I'll be right back, folks. I need my you. There's a moment, I'm going to pull. Oh, there's a moment, I'll be right back, folks. And, no, no, I'm waiting for who can come back, they see, I represent, they, oh. But we, you know, some of them, they don't understand, keep that. You want to put on this one, they, they're so people. Obviously, they, they not here. And we want some bullying, and everything that if he got a lot of violence. So, he had a speaker, this company, who recognize the cabinet speaker, who is being tired, while the speaker is not here. So, I'll be right back, folks. If you can refuse to talk on the seat, they can say that I, that I'm a veteran of, of a lot of that.
Okay, so, so, to the honourable gentleman, so, this gentleman came, uh, I think the very best, he, he did be, he's near my dinner.
So, the other process, right? What's that, you're right, not to hear it. What is for like a, for like, I even have a vote. Ah, you think we have a doctor, or we're still, I mean, I'm a doctor. He's got a speaker of this company. How do you not think you're a saint, like this? You're going to scare me. Call out the petition. Call out the petition. Call the city, I'm going to support. Call for, stand up, you need to support. Call for, please, you can't, you can't lose.
The honourable Speaker, the honourable Honourable Richard Andrew, Speaker, Honourable Councilor, Representative, the case of later, who populated on Liberia. Here, Honourable Members, I present compliments and rights to submit the point that were appealed by the Stabbing Rivers County Community College, in South and Central Rivers County, reported on Liberia. Honourable Speaker, and fellow colleague, when he attended the law, when he attended the law, it will provide numerous benefits in unity, what?
Are yet to have access to their offices, the House, unmanaged the effective execution of their responsibilities. Actions taken by the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration to retrieve the keys from Honorable Councilor Kofa. Since his removal, the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration has written and sent Honorable Councilor Kofa for separate communications to the effect that he should backgammon the offices of the Speaker and turn over the keys there to ask the way of the Deputy Speaker Rachel Nabekun and his staff to adequately serve the public. In spite of these efforts, Councilor Kofa has purposely purposely refused to honour and honour the cause of the committee. More specifically, the Committee wrote Honorable Councilor Jonathan Fonati Kofa on Tuesday, his amatory 2024, requesting him to remove his personal belongings and backgammon the offices of the Speaker. Interestingly, this request fell on deaf ears. Consequently, on his amatory 2024, the leadership of the House of Representatives in Plenary Assembly again requested the Deputy Speaker to write Honorable Councilor Kofa another letter reminding him of the previous communication we had inserted in him and requesting him on a second occasion to submit the keys from the offices of the Speaker to the new leadership for appropriate preparation for Speaker Kofa's utilization. Following the amatory 2024 and January 13 24, all requesting him to remove his personal belongings and backgammon the offices of the Speaker. The Stewes Police, the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration is again reporting to this office that all these communications to Honorable Councilor Jonathan Fonati Kofa were treated with disdain and total disrespect by our police from District Number Two of Rangoo County as he chose not to respond or act by backgammon the premises. During this period, there were vast exchanges between Honorable Kofa and the Chairman of the Committee. At one point in time, Honorable Councilor Kofa selectively populated some of said exchanges to the public. As we reported, the Honorable House of Representatives in Plenary Assembly of the 55th legislature our information is that Honorable Councilor Jonathan Fonati Kofa has since left the country and is set to be in the United States of America. Reasons for his travel are unknown and the whereabouts of the keys to the offices of the Speaker is anybody's guess. Abuse of the Ministry of Justice into the impasse. While we make this submission, it is important to note that we are approximately communicating with the Minister of Justice via telephones, in person meetings and official communications. In these engagements, the Minister promised to ask State Security Personnel to enter the Speaker's office of all belongings of Honorable Councilor Kofa on the Wednesday immediately after the State of the Nations address. To our surprise however, when we contacted the Minister yesterday, he advised that we sent Honorable Councilor Jonathan Fonati Kofa one final letter in which the party coordinator would be given to him, Honorable Kofa, to backgammon the premises, a couple of which will be sent to the Minister. Apparently, the Minister has promised that failure on the path of Honorable Councilor Kofa to adhere to this final instruction, State Security Personnel will be requested to remove his belongings out of the office in the presence of the media and civil society organizations. Final submission. The Stewes Police, the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration wishes to submit that after executing all these special efforts which have ended in what appears to be a dialogue and drawing into perspective the abuse of the Minister of Justice on the matter, it is level no further authorities but to refer to this office bar in Plenary Assembly for appropriate action as may expediently apply in addressing this impasse. Signed, the Committee's members. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen, that is the report from the Commission on Rules, Order and Administration surrounding the investigation by the refusal of Honorable Councilor Jonathan Fonati Kofa representing District Number Two of Rangoo County to backgammon the offices of the Speaker. Thank you.
Mr. President, Deputy Speaker, the Stewes Police, the Chief Flag just read the communication without stating the Committee members. Can he please call the Committee members for our honest standing so we don't have capids?
Honorable Ambassador Paul Co-Chairman, Abdul, Honorable James Collet, Chairman, sign.
Those are vision papers?
Those are vision. Yes, we just heard that the Committee is a Committee. Committee, according to House, our Committee, they're below the four papers. So we have, and we have two questions, there is nothing that that communication need to be nullified.
The issue is there, the issue is there, the issue is there. Uh, the other reports are pointless. This is because we are not to submit all of the listings of Committee members. Now that's why we have all Committee members to connect the project four and Chair. It's on our basis that Committee are reporting. From doing of all Committee members who've been drawn on teams like we said, there's a one recently, we're not going to leave you guys, I was already told. All of us are the members of this House. It's on our basis, we are only accepting reports from Committee Chair and Co-Chair. Thank you so much. Please forgive me.
Information.
Just one.
Information.
Because even if your Committee are in time, they're not in the best of things. The person who appoints officers to be the Chair of Rules and Order and the Co-Chair, they decide they power to order, they're working very well, they're good at it. Although two people are the James, the Committee shows there's, they're the Committee.
Honor, honor.
The other, the other, the other. I would like to add one other thing for your committee.
Honorable President, Honorable Secretary, and Honorable Samuel Kofa, one of the longest-serving members of the Chamber Party. And he knows that my best practice in the absence of a Committee, you can set up a specialized Committee. Because at all times, we need to have maximum or minimum seven members to have independent judgment when it comes to voting. And at all times, the Committee report should be signed by all the co-persons. So I want to ask that the best way to do it so we can look to committee ourselves. Maybe other members can be hired from our Committee, specialized Committee.
What are the points of this?
I think so, I think, I think it's everything.
The point.
I think it's everything, you want to do it, it's everything.
Yeah, the information, please. The information.
I'm trying something to advise. I believe that some last year, from what you've said. Because right now, for me, I'm asking you constantly, so who let Chair, who let Chair happen? They were far like, they're everybody, trying to make me, basically, that I will be nice. But who they are bringing them from what they have done. Regardless of the effort that they have made, the Speaker, the Speaker of the House, the Speaker of the House. Who they are bringing, who they are demanding, but it is two things that maybe the new replacement to say Committee, they are getting more support. So I can't, I can't. That maybe this way, uh, I'm putting it out of my way. But this is a full man for now, so now, I tell you this part. I still have no more than this question, thank you. Okay, no time, no time.